Short a number of people, as you can tell, Margaret. We're short Bill, Doug, Sue. Is that it? Bill, Doug, Sue?
Right, because we don't have Judith anymore. Did we? Are we asking for volunteers to? For one, for another person to join the board?
Well, I have to tell you. And last time Barbara wasn't so keen on it. I prefer not to have three alternates. I think, I think that way the two alternates can move up more.
Yeah.
Have that much business. And I just think we'd be fine with two. But Barbara wasn't so keen on that last time. So I'm going to raise it with her again.
I'm trying to get in the line. Yeah.
So Margaret, we thought we would call the meeting to order, approve the minutes. And if no one else joins, then postpone the two orders of business, which is the discussion about procedures and the election of a vice chair.
Actually, I don't think we can approve the minutes without a quorum. But I think, I think three. And I think in the case of our-
Do we have a quorum? Oh, we have a quorum.
A quorum.
Oh, that's right. Okay, yeah, we can, let's do it all.
Yeah, and I can move Nancy up and then we'll have four.
Yeah, great.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:40 on June 18th, 2020. By, what do we call it? Video conference? By video conference. And let's all identify ourselves in that Falkenburg Chair.
Margaret Minor member.
Karen Copter member.
Nancy Schoenholz alternate.
Okay, I'm going to move Nancy up to be a member tonight. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of... See, here's the problem with Zoom is I can't see this. May 21st, 2020. The minutes of the regular meeting, the special, the special, the public hearing. Oh, what happened?
I put it up, public hearing, special meeting.
Public hearing and the special meeting. Thank you, Julie. Do people want the minutes put up?
I printed them out, so I don't need them put up.
I have to print them.
I scanned them.
Okay, well, we're all technologically advanced. So-
Reading them.
Is, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the public hearing.
Of May 21st.
21st.
I second.
Julie, it says here, please request, record permission from the meeting host.
What does that mean?
I'm not seeing that.
Okay, I'm seeing it. Okay, it's gone. Okay.
It's, it's recording.
Yes, we are recording.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I do have a, can we have a discussion? I have one question.
Oh, Margaret, I'm so sorry.
Yeah. The, the question that I had was in the first paragraph where Brett says that the owner will not have, will not have access to the attic. And I, he may have said, most times, I thought I heard him say, it would be unsafe for him to go up the ladder, or he would have difficulty, or I don't recall him saying that he would not have access at all. So that was my question. And it could be, you know, he said a number of different kinds of things. So it could be that that's exactly right. But that was my question.
Well, I think, didn't he say it over two meetings? He talked about the situation. So this is actually, this, this one is from the first?
The second.
This is from the second meeting?
Yes.
Oh, actually, I don't, I don't remember. No, my understanding was-
And then I think, I think later even he said, or when somebody said, well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be safe. So I just questioned that he was, that he was stating he had no access.
I, I think, Margaret, your articulation is more precise.
Okay, so I don't, would, would you want to suggest a technical correction?
No, I would like you to suggest a technical correction.
Okay.
He won't have access because it's not safe for him.
Yeah, would not have safe, the, he would not have safe access for using the attic.
This is where you're talking, he continued that the existing loft space is not accessible to the owner by ladder.
Not safely accessible to the attic.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
We can change it to not safely accessible to owner.
Yeah.
By ladder.
By ladder. To owner by ladder. That's not a problem.
It may be, it may be fine for other people.
Exactly. Not safely access, I think just say not safely accessible. Maybe they, you know, it could be whatever. Even if there were stairs, they said he couldn't push.
But I don't, I don't think it, they weren't saying it wasn't safely accessible for everybody. They were saying it was not safely accessible for the owner.
Right.
Correct.
Correct. That, that's the way, that's what I heard.
Yeah. So that was, so, so then, so I, I moved to amend the sentence that we were referring to, to say not safely accessible to the owner.
By ladder, or not, you don't want ladder?
I wasn't even going to bother with the ladder. Whatever they did, he, it wouldn't be-
Right now, that's why they wanted, that's why they want to change it.
So then the word, if we take out by ladder, then the word currently should be in.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Currently not safely accessible.
Okay.
To the owner.
To the owner.
Yeah.
Accessible to the owner. Okay.
Do you want to read it back, Julie?
Loft currently not safely accessible to the owner.
The whole sentence is, he continued? Can you read the whole sentence?
I don't have it in front of me. I would have to go digging in my-
Well, how do you know where you're going to put it?
He continued-
He said it was in the first paragraph.
He continued that the existing loft space is not safely, is currently safely accessible to the owner, period.
Yes.
So Julie, that's the one, two, it's the third sentence.
Third sentence, thank you.
Any other discussion or changes?
Again, I thought, I thought it was very thorough.
Yes, I agree.
I have to keep muting and unmuting so you don't hear my dog's barking. I thought they were minutes were very detailed.
Yes, we thought it was important to create a, a good record.
Good idea.
Yes, I'm coming back. All right, so Julie, is it possible? Is it worth it to text or email the three of them? Or should we just not bother tonight?
I can email Doug and Sue Scott.
And Bill.
I can shoot an email to them to see if they're going to be joining.
Yeah, it's already 7:45, so.
Right. I had trouble making the link work from the agenda document. I had to, I had to copy and paste it into the search engine.
It wa, I don't think it was a link, was it? It was a copy and paste.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Zoom, Zoom link.
Yeah, you should be able to double click on it. But no, it wasn't a hyperlink.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I got it to work, but it took, it took me, as usual, a few minutes figuring it out.
But that, I think that's, just as a, to mention, I think it, when I, it occurred to me this afternoon, like, oh my God, did I store the Zoom, you know, ID anywhere? Did I see it? I didn't really read your cover note that said that the link is in the, you know, in the agenda. So just maybe going forward, you could, we could know that the link is always going to be in the agenda.
It has to be in the, yeah, it's always in the agenda because under the new executive orders to run the meetings remotely, it has to be legally.
So I-
You'll always see it there for the public.
So I guess, Julie, the question is then, can it be a hyperlink if it's in the agenda? Because I, I also couldn't click on it.
The last meeting we did, it was a hyperlink. And I believe it didn't really work for anybody.
Okay.
So that's like one of the problems that we've been tracking with Zoom. Is it working, is it not? So Karen and I actually stopped doing hyperlinks for that reason.
Got it.
I, I don't have a good answer. It's, it's, they're the correct links, but sometimes they don't always work unless you go into Zoom.
If, maybe if, if you're pretty sure that it might need cut and paste, maybe you could say that in the agenda. The link may need, you may need to paste it into your browser, something like that.
Yeah.
You can always go into Zoom and put in the password, the meeting ID and the password.
I think that's-
Yeah, that was the only way to get into this one.
I put the link, you know, like right into the URL space and it worked. But, but it took me a minute to figure it out. So the hyperlink didn't work well.
There you go.
That's life.
I, I know, it, it's, it's a 50/50 shot right now. So that's our Zoom life, unfortunately.
Did we vote on the minutes?
Nothing, you haven't. You, we, that's, you've only discussed it.
Okay. I'm going to call the, I'm going to close the discussion, call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I think the best thing to do is, I, I think we should try to meet in July because we did, I thought we did want to have this conversation about the, the impact of the recent changes on our ability to do business. So-
Couldn't, couldn't we discuss it a little bit?
Sure, of course.
Now, are we just talking about it within, like in the public meeting? Or are we talking about it amongst ourselves?
It's part of the meeting. We're in a meeting. And we have a quorum. So we can talk about anything.
Yeah, we're not having a public hearing tonight, Karen. Just the regular meeting.
Okay, so?
So it's public.
Okay.
Just like a reg, just like a meeting. We can talk, there's nobody that has to be in the room in order for us to, to proceed correctly.
So Julie, do we have any members of the public?
Don't have any members of the public on right now. But this will be uploaded to the website tomorrow with, Jimmy will put it up on the, he's required to put it up on the town clerk. It'll be next to where our meeting minutes go.
Okay.
Link to this meeting.
Okay.
So I was just curious how people feel. I think several of us have expressed rest, you know, concern that the, under the new case law, as we're being taught it, we really can hardly do anything. You know, we're too constrained. On the other hand, I believe those court cases arose because many ZBAs around the state were, you know, were giving out variances all over the place. So I was wondering how people felt about, like, how the, did we feel it worked well before the way the law was? Do we feel that it's, all of it is too strict? Are there particular things we'd like to have changed? And just, I was just curious what the people here in the room already were thinking.
I've been thinking and feeling like, as though we, as, in a way, I'm, I'm just wondering, because I feel so, we seem as a board to be so constrained, that what service are we actually providing to our community if all we're doing is rubber stamping? No, 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 no. You know, are you, are you on a ledge? If you're not on a ledge, forget it. That's the only thing we can listen to. You know, and regardless of, say, in the case of the last one, or I think also some other earlier ones where the, say, the historic committee, commission has come along that, oh, well, you know, we're in favor of, like, say, this last one, and then the one with the architects, you know, where they were also, you know, so I just feel, I, I, I feel personally, you know, what service am I offering to my community by showing up? You know, like not, not having any, any authority, not, not authority, but any wiggle room to make a judgment. There's no judgment involved, I don't think. It's either black or white. And I, I think in previous years, you know, there was, there definitely was an element of judgment. That's so, that's how I'm feeling. Also, I do wonder, and I can't, unfortunately, my brain doesn't work well enough to, you know, remember exactly the details on the, the, you know, the state Supreme Court judgments. But it seemed as though, I do recall that they were communities that were not very similar to Roxbury. You know, with our, you know, rural historic kinds of communities. I think they were more, came out of, you know, arguments over, you know, yeah, in heavily populated areas.
I can say, I haven't thought that much about it. I know one thing that I'm glad we can't do anymore. I wasn't happy that applicants could come in and say, well, I need to have the same size house as my neighbor. That, well, the neighborhood characteristic is a 40,000 square foot house. And I, you know, I need, so that I thought kind of interfered with the character of Roxbury to have diversity in housing. But I'm not clear in my own mind of the other, the other areas of discretion that we've lost, which ones I really regret or how it would work better. I just haven't, I'm hoping, you know, about, I'm curious what other people think because I haven't really thought that through at all.
Nancy?
Well, I, I think that we are quite restricted. And we have to frequently remind ourselves that the variance goes with the land and not with the person. But it, it is heartrending when you have an older person who has a home and they want their children to move in with them. And they can't do anything to increase the size of their house to accommodate a family. And it's, you know, it's, I, I know we have to go by the law, but I, sometimes I wish we could go by our hearts.
Do we have a case like that?
We, we approved, I, every, I, I remember it was, I think, 1967. He, his, his son was moving, I think, in with him from New Milford in the family. I think we did, I think we did approve for him to build, to add on to his house a little bit. But, you know, sometimes it's just, it's, it's so restrictive that it doesn't make a house a home.
So that's zoning. I mean, if the zoning regulation was different, then we wouldn't have to give variance.
So-
Well, say like last night?
I guess I, I had two slightly different questions. I mean, one is, maybe it's the same, which is, is the, is the very strict interpretation that we've been instructed on, the way that other towns have interpreted the, the cases. Because I don't know that I would hear from other places, but it would, it would be very interesting to know whether other towns, taking nothing away from Gail, other towns that are being advised by other attorneys are not being quite as strict as we are. And I don't know how we go about doing that. And the only other thought I had was, you know, to check back with Gail and see what, if anything, is currently in the works in terms of legislation. She had talked about them trying to, to get some things into legislation, but she hasn't mentioned anything about it.
Well, they probably haven't. I mean, unless it started, you know, six months ago, nobody's been meeting or anything.
Yeah, but this, I mean, she, it's a couple of years now, right? Since the-
I think it's been about a year that we've just, that I recall that I've been feeling like my, you know, we just say, no, 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 no. And, and that's the, like, the last couple of cases we've, that we've said no on.
Karen?
We've said, we're sorry, we said-
I think we need to be careful about talking about specific cases.
Okay.
Yeah, for the record. But go ahead, make your point.
I'm just saying that we find ourselves often in the position of apologizing for our, our decision.
So it's true. Because I think we do feel sorry.
Yes.
We wish we could grant, you know. You know, I, I think for the most part, people want to improve their homes in a way. And unfortunately, I, I don't know how educated they are when they buy a home that's, is nonconforming. And, and what that really means. So it, I, I wish I were a fly on the wall sometimes when the real estate agent is talking to a potential owner.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, it's, it's a nonconforming house, but you know, you probably can get a variance for, who knows what's, what, what it, or they, or they're, they're, they're fine. And this is a starter home for them, and this is the best they can do. But, you know, it's, it's hard. It's hard when we want to give to people in our community and we're restrained by legalities.
Right now, I think, I think the real estate market around here is doing very well, particularly for houses. This is just under, under $800,000, which tend to be, you know, what do they say, real people? It's like-
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I bought a nonconforming house and I didn't have a clue.
Yeah.
I mean, I knew, I guess I knew my house is like a little bit in Washington, you know, nine tenths, and, I mean, my property is a little bit in Washington. And I kind of thought, well, that's, that's the extent of it. You know? Oh, but I was going to say about the nonconforming issue is that, you know, a lot, whether, a lot of the Roxbury character is in its historic houses. And, and many, many of those historic houses are nonconforming because they're, were built, you know, over 100 years ago, close to the roads.
Or there were no roads.
Right. Exactly.
So, so Nanette posed a question that might, it would help me. Are other towns, are other attorneys, and I'm a big fan of Gail, but are other towns, other attorneys interpreting the law this way? Gail would, nothing is going to happen in this, there will be a special session in July, but there, there won't be any land use bills coming up, I hope. So that won't be till next year. So the changes could come in the legislature or the changes could come with your town zoning. Down, just the way town zoning said, okay, we're going to give people 25% expansion in the back. You know, they can say other things. They, they do the zoning.
So that, that's how we could potentially work within the system. But if we were to, wanted to proceed on asking for some, some more leeway in interpreting the, the-
Yeah.
I don't know how, yeah, I, I don't know how we would, how one would go about finding out what other towns are doing. You know, I, I-
Well, you could, I think, I know a lot of land use attorneys, but the council of governments perhaps should be helpful in, in, in researching that for us. The town of Washington has a, quite a well-known town council now, Mike Siska. So that's because, well, they need it. So I think we could ask, and our, we had Tom Byrne's son. I didn't think he was terribly good. But we did have a little educational forum on land use law, about, about five or six years ago. So maybe there could be a little educational forum that would take up how are towns dealing with this issue? And maybe there'd be someone who could lead that discussion.
Perhaps, Margaret, putting several of your ideas together, perhaps we could ask COG to organize such a meeting. So, you know, I want to be, I want to, I want Gail to know, understand that this is not about our second guessing what she's told us. But really to try and understand what our role is.
Right. She should, she will be able to tell us, you know, it could be a separate question. She would know what people are talking about in the planning section of the Connecticut Bar. They've been talking, they've been talking about this for a while. So Gail, I think it would be perfectly reasonable to ask her, I know a couple of other people in that section, but ask her, is anybody really talking about any new legislation for 2021?
I, I suppose we could also ask her whether she's hearing the same kind of concern from her other towns.
Yeah.
Are, does, are her other towns similar to- Do our, does, are her other towns similar to us?
She's been counsel in, um, Southbury. I'm trying to think what other towns she's been counsel. She's been very, she's been very active, uh, representing people in the zoning and in Washington. So she knows the Washington law inside out.
Right.
Um, so I think, um, I think she would, she's one of the few land use attorneys that I've ever heard say that she actually likes to deal with small towns. Because most just think, those people don't know anything, can't deal with them. And she, she does, she does like working with small towns.
Yeah, that, well, that sounds like a good idea.
So. In terms of the council, COG, council of government, would it be Barbara that we would ask to make the connection?
I think that would be appropriate. Barbara, they're made up, they're no longer planning things. They're made up of, yeah, Barbres are official representative in the council of governments. So she would either raise the question, or she could delegate someone like Jim, or you, or someone who's, um, uh, familiar with the question to pose the question.
Okay.
Would, um, would it be, uh, beneficial or appropriate for us to speak to, in an official capacity, to the Roxbury zoning board?
Uh, sooner or later.
Yeah, I think, um, I think yes, but not until we have either some specific proposals, because I don't think they understand the constraints we're under at this point. So I think unless we have, I would like us to have specific proposals or specific areas that we would like to discuss. So, because I think, as Margaret said, if there are things that the zoning commission could change that would make it either uh, possible for people to make some of these changes without having to get a variance, or, um, they could make it, they could write it in a way that potentially makes it, gives us more flexibility. But I think we have to be, I I think we should, I just think we have to be more, we have to be ready to be very specific with them.
Like, one, one more thing, but it's, I I don't know if it's like who's put the bell on the cat, but it's not helping us when John Cody tells applicants, this looks like a good idea. And of course, it looks like a good idea. We think it's fine when we look at it. But, um, uh, I don't know if there's any way of dealing with that, but maybe he could just not comment. You know, leave, leave it, uh, don't get there, you know, it puts us in the position of, well, any sensible person who knows anything about zoning would give a variance. Uh, I, you know, I can imagine that applicants come in with that sort of feeling, and, um, anything he could do or the office could do to, uh, to brace people for the fact that hardship is, you know, it's tough. And it's, um, it's not a question of what people might like to do at this time.
That's why Doug is going to be reviewing the, the applicant, you know, the applications as well, so that, um, I, his understanding of, uh, the the legal system, I think, is pretty solid. And I think he might be very helping the applicant really determine and define their hardship. You know, so.
I'm wondering if in those conversa, as he's having those conversations, it might, there might be a moment where he could have the conversation with John that you're suggesting, Margaret.
Yeah, something.
Yeah. I'm not the one.
Well, you know, he may be able to go back to John and say, I understand that you, you know, you were encouraging so and so to do such and such, and in looking at the application, it's, you know, the hardship is really not very clear. So it might help, you know, anybody, John or anybody who makes, you know, uh, subjective comments to rein those in a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand, he doesn't want to say to an applicant, you're not gonna get your dormer.
What he should say is, you know, this is an application, well, it goes before the, you know, the ZBA, and just make sure that you have X, Y, and Z, and make sure that you have all the, your ducks in a row. So.
Yeah.
Yes, he, yeah, for, and I think people have to be careful when they give opinions, um, to applicant, to applicants, because they didn't want to use that, and sometimes they distort it, and it gets to be problematic.
You know, John has, has not had that much official business with ZBA, and I'm not certain that anybody has really fully briefed him on what the constraints are. Because sometimes I think he's as surprised as the applicant is that we're not able to give a variance.
Yeah, you could be right about that.
Yeah.
Wendy Walker called me later, and John may, he he should know more than Wendy, but she said, has the law changed? I I was so surprised. I didn't, you know, I thought this was a little project. I was so surprised. And, um, I said, yeah, the law has changed, and, um, she just hadn't known that, so.
Well, but also, Margaret, I have to say, she said, I don't, I, this issue of a hardship never came up before, which cannot be true.
That, that's absolute. Yeah, a few other things like that.
Hello?
What?
Oh, I lost you for a second.
Oh, we didn't lose you.
Okay. Okay. So. Julie, you haven't gotten emails or texts from anybody, have you, that they're having, trying to get in?
No, nothing.
Okay. How does, how does this sound for our next steps? Julie, we'll put this, um, the conversation we've had into, summarize it so that the other board members can, um, benefit from it and so that we could pick up the discussion maybe, uh, further along when we talk next time. And, um, I can call Gail and just basically tell her what we're struggling with and ask her, um, and and tell, remind her that at one point she said there was gonna be activity to try and put in some legislation to to try and ameliorate some of this, has any of that happened, or is the planning section of the bar thinking about doing that? And then, um, maybe I, you know, I, maybe I just tell her that our, our thought is, well, that what we would really like to understand is how other, one of the things we'd like to understand is how other towns are handling this. And one idea that we thought might, um, be useful would be to have, uh, a number of small-town ZBA members come together for a, either a, a learning session about this, but mostly what we're interested in hearing or talking about is how other towns are handling, managing this.
And do they feel, yeah, how, how they're managing it and, and and how they feel about it as well.
I I have a suspicion, only a suspicion, but a suspicion that other towns are not being as restrictive as we are.
I I believe you, that I have that same suspicion.
It will be difficult.
Are you trying to talk? Nancy, you trying to talk?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I put myself on mute because of the dogs. I was wondering, since Doug was on the ZBA in Brookfield, if he has, what what his thinking is about this, and if he knows of anybody that or has, or if he's discussed any of this with any of his previous colleagues in the ZBA.
Okay. Good idea. So. I guess I should then also speak with Barbara about making a connection with, with the council of governments, seeing whether they've.
I think, uh, I think maybe, uh, because Barbara has so much on her plate right now, that maybe your conversations with Gail and, um, Doug, you know, talking with those two might, um, you might have more ideas about what exactly we would be asking, or what kind of meeting we would be asking the council of governments to do. I'd be very interested, um, be, because they have staff of variable competence. Be very interested to hear what Gail and Doug have to say, and where they think is the right place to go.
So, one more thought, which maybe, um, I I I don't know if this is a, is a nonstarter, but hang on, I wonder if that's somebody trying, hang on a minute. Oh, it's my potential spam calling.
I thought it's like, when they first came across the screen, I thought it said potential spa. And I got like really excited. It's like, ooh, oh, someone's calling me from a spa.
Whether the members of the ZBA could just have some kind of informal set of phone conversations with members of ZBA in other towns, like, could we call the chairs of other ZBAs and ask them just to have a conversation with us, with one of us, not with the whole board, obviously?
And then, and then what, then report back to?
I'd be, I'd be, um, willing to ask what's happening in, let's say, two towns where I know people, Litchfield and Washington.
Those would be great. Those two towns are very similar to Roxbury. Yeah, the other one I was thinking was, um, I don't have any contact there, but Bridgewater.
Yeah. So that would be an action item. You're, you're gonna do action items, right? Nanette, you're gonna tell us what are.
I think, I think Julie and I will put our heads together and, um, try to combine the summary of the conversation with a set of action items.
Right. Plus, now, just thinking out loud, I mean, other towns that we would want to talk to could include Kent, Warren, Sharon, Salisbury. You know, not, I don't know that Woodbury is that applicable to us, but it could, you know, it mirrors us quite as much, but Woodbury.
Well, and there are many, 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 perhaps hundreds, small towns in other parts of the state that we don't even think about.
Right.
There's also, you know, I always say the council of governments, this is, uh, there's also a council of small towns, COST, C-O-S-T. And Barbara was head of that, uh, for a year or two. I do know the, uh, Betsy Gara is their, uh, their counsel, their, their attorney for the council of small towns. She's also the attorney for Connecticut Water Utilities, so I see her all the time. I see her in court, uh, but she, you know, COST also, um, council of small towns also might have been hearing things or know that other people are asking questions. I could pursue, I I could ask COST.
Okay. That sounds good.
Just going back to what, um, we had spoken about a while back, about how the real estate market is booming now, it would seem that you know, we might get busy here as well, if people are, you know, city people are coming in, buying houses that they want to improve, we might have.
More business.
We might have more business. There might be more reason to, uh, you know, have a, maybe some clarification in our direction or, or our authorities.
Yeah. I think so. Everybody I know who had their house on the market and it, when it wasn't selling, it's now sold their houses, so.
Yeah, people are selling their houses in like two weeks.
I guess it's a seller's market. Isn't that what they call it? Okay. Why don't we leave it there? We'll put together a summary and a set of action items and circulate it around. And, um, if, if the action items are not as you remember them, just let Julie or me know. And otherwise, I think, um, Margaret, you said you would make some phone calls. I will talk to Gail and report back. Now, Margaret, you're the expert on this. Are we allowed to have conversations in between meetings? In other words, could I, could you send an email, if you have a conversation with somebody from, um, Litchfield? Could you send an email to the ZBA, to members of the ZBA, saying what you had learned? Or, or is that, is that illegal communication?
I think not.
Okay.
I think not, although staff can prepare educational material. And I would always check with FOI or Gail, but I believe staff can prepare educational material. Like, I could talk to you or Julie, and, um, I think maybe you could prepare materials for the, um, board to look at. And, um, but I think for one board member to talk to or be communicating with a forum of, would, would be, uh, correct, I believe.
Okay. Okay. And I assume the document, the educational materials, whatever we call them, has to be a public document.
Yes, it would be a public document, but I could say, for instance, I spoke to the ZBA in Washington, and I spoke to the executive director at COST, and this is what they said. And give it as a report to you and Julie. I I believe, I would always double check it, but I believe that would be the way to do it. And the minute, the way I read the law, the minute I turn it in to Julie, and probably to you, the minute I turn it in, it is a public document at that point. Uh, there are certain exceptions for work product, but it's safest to assume that any email we send out to each other is a public document, if it's on board business. we send out to each other is a public document, if it's on board business.
Okay, well, we'll be cautious. Any towns anyone else wants to place a call to? Where they have contacts? Oh, you know, oh, I had one thought, which was to call Ty.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Now, Julie, is she, she was going to work with Washington, right? Is that where she went?
Works with the building inspector of, who works at Washington and Kent.
Oh, so she doesn't work on ZBA business anymore?
I understand, not anymore, she works for the building, yeah.
Okay. That was my thought, was that she might be in touch with other people who, you know, other ZBAs, but I, when you said it, I, that's, I think your memory is correct, so. Okay. If anybody comes up with any ideas about people they could talk to, let, let's have Julie be the conduit at this point, so we're all obeying the, the letter of the law, so. All right. Julie, I'm just trying to think about how to be in touch with, let's do this, let's put the minutes together, the minutes and the action items together, and circulate it, and we can put a note on it that says, you know, we're sorry you weren't able to make the meeting, and we went on without you.
So does that mean in, when we have future meetings on the, on this topic, that all of us have to be here, and then, and then?
No, it's not.
Not, it's not a public hearing, so it doesn't matter.
I just wanted to say one more thing for clarification on FOIA. I could ask Karen or Nanette, and say, you know, I'm really concerned about multifamily housing in this town, and particularly if we're not talking about a case, talk about things, but what wouldn't be proper is if I emailed a quorum, I'm saying a forum, a quorum of the board, more than three members on the same subject, and said, don't you think we ought to, you know, and sort of lobbying, lobbying the board to get on one page on a piece of business, that's not supposed to be done privately, that's supposed to be done publicly.
Okay, okay.
If such a thing as a serial meeting, a serial illegal meeting, where it's, I don't call you all at once, but I call each one in a row and ask you the same question, and you know, then put your answers together.
Okay, so Karen, was your question, did we all have to be here? Is that your question?
Well, if we're going to bring, if we're, I presume we're going to continue to talk on this subject.
Yeah.
For at least one more meeting, if not many more meetings, but but, so, yeah, so operationally, my question was, operationally, do the four of us, the identical four of us need to be present in order to continue? And, yeah, and I think.
Because that, that's true when you're having a public hearing, as Margaret said, it's just the three people not being here is, is unusual for us. So.
Well, and also because the topic, what we're discussing is about how we operate.
Right.
So the, yeah, so if half of us are missing.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Oh.
Table, the vice chair.
I need a motion to adjourn them, oh, Julie, go ahead.
Can you table the nomination for a vice chair, a motion for that first?
Thank you. Can I have a motion to table the election of a vice chair until, you know, we can do it.
Does he, does he want to do it?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Do it, and then he can accept at another, at the next meeting.
Okay.
He can always retire.
Yeah. Can I have a motion, I'm going to open nominations for filling of the position of vice chair of the zoning board of appeals. Nominations are open.
Okay, I nominate Doug Lewis to be vice chair of the Roxbury zoning board of appeals.
Any other nominations? Okay, I'm going to close the nominations. All in favor of electing Doug Lewis to be vice chair of the zoning board of appeals of Roxbury, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thanks for the reminder, Julie. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn our meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody, it was a good discussion, I think, I think it really got us, I think it really got us started down the road of having some concrete things to work on, because I think we can talk it to death in terms of how unhappy we are, but I think it's, if we have some positive things to help move us forward, I think it'll be better, it'll be better for all of us, so.
Yes, I agree, I'm glad, I'm glad we went ahead and had our meeting, too.
Yep.
Me too.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Hey, great to see you.
Good night.
Good night. Bye-bye.
Bye.
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 Bye. Do I get a?
Cut anybody off. Oh, they're all freezing, okay.